Time to order the work session for January 6th. Call to order and roll call please.
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
He said present, but he's unmuted.
Vice Mayor Mathias Rosales.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Item today is items for discussion only. Presentation followed by discussion and possible direction to staff and any all matters regarding the Mesa Street project. We have Jenny and Ilokio and Directors for Public Works and Economic Development. Como estamos?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This item was brought to you at the last work session. We had a discussion of this project being proposed for a CDVG project, which would give us some funding to take care of this project. However, at the last work session, Mr. Rivera was not present, but our engineer Jim Davy was. And we did go into a little bit of some of the financing issues. Today, Ilokio was able to kind of walk you through the process again and discuss the cost estimates that we have received from the engineer. So I'm going to go ahead and let him talk a little bit about some of the financing and some of the proposed improvements, and then we'll get back to talk a little bit more about what your direction is going to be on this project. So with that, Ilokio Vera.
Thank you. Thank you Jenny. Hi Ilokio, thank you for presenting this. Last time because you weren't here, we voted that you're going to take care of all this. So.
Take care of what?
Now you got to wine and dine us.
Oh, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. So, so yeah, so now we do have a engineer's estimate that we didn't have back on the last time, but the, the subtotal is about $900,000. And then once you include construction administration, contingency, and engineer added 25% contingency, mainly because we don't have a full design right now as we're looking at a conceptual. So it comes to close to 1.2 million. And the, the big item on, in the project at this stage is the retaining wall. And that retaining wall roughly is about 400 feet long, 400 feet long and about 30 foot high. And right now at this time is estimated roughly about $425,000. So with this project, obviously, if we can look at the layout, what we're looking at is a two-way street on Mesa Street and then, and, okay. So, so obviously, it'll be connecting Mesa Street, going through to the south, all the way to C from, from, this is E, E Street and to C Street. And then the alley allowing for one-way traffic, probably parking one side, sidewalks on both sides. And then on Mesa Street, it would be with two-way traffic and then parking along the houses with sidewalk along the houses. But the first question about this project is really the, you know, do you really want to do Mesa Street and, and pay for the 400 plus $1,000, 400K plus $1,000 of retaining wall to be able to make this connection? From the staff side, you know, we discussed it internally and we think it's a, a good option to commit, to create access, you know, during the winter traffic that Archibald becomes saturated. And then, you know, this would allow for a release of traffic to the north again or to the south, you know, when, when you, when Archibald is full, I guess the three lanes are full here. So that's, that's our sort of a take on it. But then, you know, at the end of the day, it's a big expense, you know, and I think council's feedback would be very important for, for this. So that's the first question. And then the second question, really what it comes down to is really deciding, you know, where the parking would be allowed, especially in the alley. You know, some businesses would definitely like it on their side and the other side and then on the west or east. So, but we can only fit, you know, sidewalk, parking on one side just because of the width of the easement. I'm not sure if I made myself clear on those things, but if there are any questions at this time?
Well, well, I'm assuming that parking location and direction, that's something that staff, if council's able to find you the money and continue forward, you guys would probably, I'm assuming, meet with the residents, the property owners and figure out, also get their opinion before we make any decision because obviously, you know, it affects their properties and I know that everybody will be happy to have additional parking because right now there's nothing out there. Without that retention wall and doing Mesa Street in the back, how much of the whole project is just the Mesa Street area?
So, so, so obviously, I mean, because of the 1.2 million overall cost at this time, it would be a multi-phase project for sure. You know, we, we get a little over $400,000 with, with grant money. So we're thinking, you know, phase one, doing the, the, the actual alley, maybe doing a little portion of, of C Street. So let me see. So it'll be doing the alley and then maybe doing a little portion of, of E and a little portion of C, just leaving, just leaving out Mesa Street and the retaining wall for, for the second phase. And then in the second phase coming in, I mean, the city will have to contribute quite a bit to do the paving and the sidewalk and the grant will pretty much cover the grant, the retaining wall.
Okay. And that, and that's why I was asking if we do it in phases, how much of the one-two was that Mesa Street, that way for the, for the Mesa, for the Archibald and the alley and the little side streets, what are we looking for to start off, to start hunting and then use the CBG?
So, so right now in front of me, I, I really don't have a, a quantity, quantity breakdown to be able to tell you.
Okay.
But I think the, the grant for one year should be sufficient to finish off the alley and I think pieces of both C Street and E Street. So I think we would be able to connect it from north to south and leaving out, you know, Mesa Street, not the alley, but Mesa Street and retaining wall for the future. And then we can do another grant funding phase plus some additional city funding. I think that will get, get us fairly close.
All right. Thank you for that. Yeah, and that's pretty similar to what they presented that day, but we wanted to get your input since, you know, the city and you're the engineer. I'll open it up to the council members for questions. So I'll go ahead and start with Mario.
Yes, question for Ilokio. Does that include the rainstorm or storm drain? How do they call it? Is that including that project?
Okay. So part of the analysis has been also finalized, which is not, is different from this project, but it, it could be tied together and it could be evaluated, but is, and, and also the consultant presented that storm drainage project. Many of lots have the issue that, you know, obviously they're small and, and right now our regulations require them to do onsite retention. So this, this project doesn't really do anything for, on, regarding storm drain, but it does collect all the storm water from the streets and takes it to either to the north or to the south and it would end up, it would end up in a, in a storm drain, existing storm drain. But regarding the onsite retention for the properties, that's something that it's still in the works on a different project.
Will that alleviate any issues on the businesses that we have there existing right now?
I, I think it provides options as far as what can be done and, and it was actually presented to council not too long ago, but it, Jenny is right, it was completed. And I think there's a minimal investment to allow a certain percentage of the storm water from the onsite to enter the storm drain system. And then there's a more substantial investment to allow all of this area to be discharged onto the storm drain and which, which would be creating a new storm drain going to the, to the, to the west. So, so that's really a different project, but this would definitely collect the water from the streets and take it away from, from the, from pretty much from the lots, parcels.
For the businesses.
Okay.
And, and that would be that, that presentation that that company gave was about a month ago, no?
Right.
Have a go. Yeah.
Con Davy. Was it Davy?
Yes, yes it was.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so those costs associated with reducing the requirement on onsite retention, those expenses that the city can decide or not which way to go, those are independent from this project. This project is really specific for the footprint here around Mesa Street and the Mesa Alley and C and D and, and, no, C, E and F, those streets. And, and, and just, just to correct myself, so the first phase, I think we would be covered, you know, for paving the alley and, and parts of C and, and E. But you know, I think the second phase for the retaining wall and Mesa Street, you know, that, that would be a more substantial, it would be a substantial investment from the city plus a grant or maybe two years of grant funding to be able to cover the second phase.
Okay. Thank you Ilokio.
And these numbers are conceptual, you know, and once it gets into the true design plans, we would have a lot more precise numbers, but at this time it's just because we need to decide how many lanes and, you know, parking and all that.
Okay. All right. Thank you Ilokio. Ms. Torres?
No comment.
Okay. Mayor, any additional comments?
I know, I think that we, they should want to be perfect. I think the Mesa Street project is a go. I think we should have the funding for it. I think it's a nice art. I think it would benefit the merchants in that area. And the thing is, it's something that has been ignored for many, especially sidewalks and drainage has been an issue. So I commend this project and I, I support it 100%.
Thank you Mayor. All right. Thank you Mayor. Mr. Ponce?
No comments, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you Jose. Mr. Carrasco?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Just, I agree with the mayor, like you said, it's been ignored for many, many years because if you drive down there, it's very bad. So it's awesome that we're going to start working on this. So thank you guys for, for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the consensus is that they offer you to help staff find money for the first phase and work with staff on the second phase, but let's make sure we don't forget to reach out to the community, the lot property owners to figure out, you know, before we make any final decisions on sidewalks and parking, what, you know, get everybody involved in that area. That'd be a great project, community project for downtown. Jenny, did you want to add something? It looked like you want to say something.
Yeah, no. What we're, what we're planning to do is go out and talk to the businesses there to try to get some feedback, but first we wanted to come to you because if you say, yes, we want to do the entire project, because if I ask a business there, do you want to have a project or the entire project, obviously they're going to say, I want the whole project. And we know that is a financial impact to the city. As Ilokio stated, we will be able to get this funding, at least for this year. We would have to wait another two years before we can get additional CDVG funding because it would only qualify as on a regional account, not as an SSP. And so unless the city does put into the budget, the additional funding, which is, you know, 600,000, 550,000, that's pretty significant and that doesn't include the drainage issue that addresses this area as Mr., as, as Councilmember Bugana stated. So huge investment. We definitely need to do it in phases, but if the direction from council is to move forward with the entire project, we will do that and we will talk to the business owners to try to get some direction on the one-way, two-way parking issues.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone have any additional comments? Anyone on, no?
Actually, I want to add something just to clarify. On the, the way we were looking at laying it out and it's just asking, getting people's feedback will be very important, but just something to consider is on the north end, on the west end, so on Mesa Street, it would be two-way traffic, parking along the, the residents and then with sidewalk on that side to create, you know, pedestrian access, you know, both ways. And, and the reason we would include side street parking would be because on the alley side, we wouldn't have or we can't, we can't have on both sides because there's no room. So it would probably be just parking on the east side because the north, the west portion or the west half of the block would be getting the parking on the Mesa Street. So we're looking at parking on the east side along the lot parcels that, you know, are up against Archibald because Archibald doesn't provide any on-street parking. So we were, that's sort of the way we're, the reasoning behind that layout or that concept, but I mean, we're definitely open for ideas as far as.
That makes sense because it gives parking for everybody to have on-street parking. So I get it. But again, let's just make sure we involve the property owners that way later on they don't say that we didn't have, you know, that we're, that we're our basis. Okay.
That we, that we weren't sensitive enough.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, okay, great. You guys got direction. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is item number two. What was it?
Two B.
Two B. All right. So next item is presentation, discussion and possible action directions to staff and any and all matters regarding the design concepts of a temporary fire station number two. Angel Ramirez, fire.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of council. It's nice to see you, Mayor.
Gracias, Angel. Appreciate it, guys. You are my savior.
It's nice seeing you out here. This is just, we went out to, to get a design for the temporary fire station, fire station number two on the east side. We're trying to build a 2,500 square foot building that would house about seven, seven firefighters, so seven dorms. So we went out for a design. We have, we had four, four, we had four bids back. Vega and Vega, Thompson Architects, Edias Engineering and Innovator Construction and Design. Basically asking you guys, see who would you guys want us to select? For us, it would be easy, we'd go with the lowest bidder, which was Vega and Vega Engineering. And if you guys have no, any issues with them, we're ready to move on. Rick is here to answer any questions. He's going to be the, he's the lead on this project.
Okay. Rick, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rick, Vega and Vega are actually very, very good. So they've been working with the city for a very long time and I think it would be, it would be beneficial and I commend you guys. And sorry, sorry, Mathias. But let's, let's get this project going and it's something that needs to get done and, and it's something that needs, in my opinion, in less than two years, we need to do progress on this one. Okay? That's it, Mathias.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And I, yeah, they're the lowest bidders, I agree. They work a lot here in the area as well. My only concern would be any, whoever it goes to, make sure they commit to their timeline because I know right now all the engineers are busy and, you know, that's very important so it doesn't delay the project. Like the mayor stated, this is something that's important to, to our community and to the east side of town. So you guys review the documents and for future reference, I think it's a little bit easier when we have them in the sales sheet, just look down the road, but let's see the move. But yeah, I agree. Mario?
No, I'm good. Very much needed project. I'm happy. Let's keep moving forward on this.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Torres?
No, no comment. No, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ponce?
Well, thank you, chief. I agree with you, Mayor. I mean, we need this real bad and, yeah, I think that Vega, those, the company, those guys, I mean, that's pretty good. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor, your envelope, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's right at the top of the mic.
Mr. Carrasco?
No, no comments, no questions, but I just want to let the fire chief know that this is super exciting to hear that we are moving forward with this much needed project.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabrera?
Yes, I kind of had a little conversation with the chief already. Chief, they will be designing the whole thing even though it's going to be phased out, correct?
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is we're gonna, everybody, the bids that came in, they said that we're going to take about six to seven weeks to get the design in, then we'd go out to bid. Looking at the timeline, we probably won't be getting a bid for construction probably by maybe hopefully April or May, and then we'll phase it out between this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Our timeline, I mean, I don't want to commit to something, but hopefully by this time next year, we have a building out there and we're ready to move in. Like I talked to you guys during the budget retreat, all we need is a building. We have the equipment, you guys have provided all the equipment and the personnel, we just need the building.
Awesome, chief. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabrera reminded me, reminded me of something there. So the building that we're bidding out for, is it going to be like a house-style building or are we going for a full-blown fire station?
No, it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a 2,500 square foot building just to be able to house about seven firefighters in that area for that, for that, the east side. So it's going to get phased out and we're not going to have the fire station that we have, Fire Station One out there. It's going to be a, a small building.
Okay. All right. And the reason I remind you because of our, like the design for the engineering, like Mr. Cabrera mentioned, it's going to be for the full design for future phases. As long as we don't end up like our other building that's behind your, next to you right there that we're like on phase three of year five, so, or phase one of year five. So.
Yeah.
Remind everybody about that building there.
Mathias, Mathias, you were always talking about an incentive for our fire and police.
Yeah.
So, so that's an incentive, okay? So it's a plus.
They got to compete with facilities. So yeah, there you go.
Exactly. So.
All right.
Good job.
All right. Thank you, guys. Any additional questions? Are there anything for them in regards to the project or anything?
No, I think we're good to go, Vice Mayor. Thanks for asking.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item, what's next on this agenda? Item, work, a discussion of possible direction to staff on any and all matters regarding contracting CYT Incorporated for the Benestar 9B restroom project. Parks and Drags, Mr. Galvez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Mayor, good to see you. I'm glad you're, you're looking better.
Thank you.
Just wanted to bring this up to.
hesitate for a moment.
Mayor and council again. It was a project that we had discussed earlier in the year. We went out and, and found a building company that will, look, we found the, the price we were looking for pretty close to it to relocate or to locate a bathroom at Benestar 9B. It's CXT. It's a prefab building. I believe there's a picture. That's what it would look like. This building comes all, you know, fully put together and we were able, the price is about 66,300. We talked to finance because on the budget, it was set for 60,000 through impact fees. But speaking to finance, I think we'll be able to use some of the impact fees from the park just because of the timeframe. I, I don't believe we'll be able to spend all the money for, for the park. And so we'd like to use about 9,000 to cover the, the building itself and then there's going to be some costs for installation in-house. We're looking to work with Public Works on the installation of the sewer, water and, and also electrical that really just doing stub outs where when they lay the building, it'll connect to all those services. And again, this is something we had talked about, but finance requested that I bring this back to Mayor and council for review and, and just making sure that we're good to move forward with this project. So I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galvez. My opinion, I think it's a great project. We got to figure it out to make it come true. Benestar 9B, I think is what, 12, 14 years old already? And it's probably already 95, 90% filled in, plus all the surrounding new subdivisions. So it's time for something in the east side to have, you know, these services for residents over there when they have their parties or something. So my point of view, I like it. I like the design. I think I like the first one versus the second one, but I don't know, that's between you guys. That's my opinion. So I'll go down the list. Mario, are you there?
Yes, I am. No? I'm good.
Good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Cabrera?
Good. It's a good project. Yeah, and I agree with what you said, Mathias, so it's looking good. It's nice to have you.
Sounds good. Africa, Mr. Carrasco?
No questions, no comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Ms. Torres?
No, no questions. Good project. Very needed over there. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ponce?
No, no comments. Thank you.
All right. Mayor?
Well, I just want to say that those are needed restrooms. And the thing is, you get tired of listening to, to residents as, we need the restrooms, we need the restrooms and, and things are getting, the things are getting full. And so, but let me reemphasize that the property taxes would have, would have dealt with that. And the thing is, it would, it would have helped a lot. Okay? And especially in the parks. And so let me reemphasize and I will continue to reemphasize. La Fe needs help. And the thing is, everything's going that way, but everything you can't get for free. So let, let's work hard and let's reemphasize and let's not forget about it because they could get better stuff. The thing is, we need to put our, our. Y'all need to put our, our good news and get it done. Louis, please.
Just to provide you information, if, once approved, they are, we have a, a purchasing agreement through Soul Source, so we can, we can work with finance to directly work with this vendor. It would be if, when approved and we can move with the purchasing, it'll be about 190 days for the manufacturer of this facility and that. And so then it'll, it'll be delivered to us and we'll be able to install. So we're thinking those, we're looking at probably about April. They're hoping April we'll be able to get it if they move a little bit faster. So we hope, I know deliveries have been delayed a little bit because of the whole COVID situation, but we're hoping to have that ready before the summer.
Thank you, Louis. Who else is online? Mathias, if I, if I may, Louis, do we have the restrooms open like in the other facilities that have restrooms or are they still closed because of COVID?
No, due to the order, we currently have all facilities closed at this time.
So these will be built, but if anything, close them?
Yes, until, and we're, we're being optimistic, hopefully by that date, maybe things will change and they'll be ready to be open. That area is a. That area is a five-acre park, uh, retention, so it has a lot of use in it, and yes, uh, Mayor, that, that subdivision, I think it's pretty much full. So, so it's
It's full.
It's definitely needed, and it's, uh, been a high priority request from those residents in that area.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be kind of nice for it to be ready to go once COVID is lifted and we go back to cooperation, it'll be like, great, you know, so that'll be good. Hopefully with this six months, like, they're announcing that we'll get back to a little bit of normality. Because these kids do need the activity.
Definitely.
Six months, guys, it's gonna take six months, vaccination, six months.
Okay, all right, uh, Ralph, uh, anything? I think it's Ralph on there, huh, that is. Uh, Tadeo?
No, we're good, we're good this time, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, cool, thank you, guys. Uh, all right, you guys got direction there?
Thank you.
All right. What's the next item? Item, discussion of possible action. Direction to staff on any and all matters regarding the renewal of the intergovernmental agreement regarding joint use of recreational facilities at Yuma Union High School District Number Seventy, San Luis High School, and the city of San Luis. Mr. Galvez?
Yes, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members.
They have five years already?
Um, this is, just to give a little re, uh, recap, um, this IGA, um, is five years old. Um, and, uh, this was when we installed lights at the high school and, uh, and did an IGA for the facility use agreements. Um, this will be finished, this, this IGA will be terminating in February. And so, before that, we went back to the school, uh, because there were certain things, uh, we wanted to, uh, recommend to change, and, and requesting to school, so I was working with legal, um, uh, to, to, uh, provide a new updated, uh, IGA as this five-year one, uh, is terminating. Um, part of the old IGA was that we pay for electricity, uh, on the soccer field, we pay for the, the maintenance of the field. Um, and it was, and the electricity was in our name. Um, and that, and also the school provided, uh, facilities for us to use, um, if, if we requested. And vice versa, they were, they were able to use, uh, our facilities if requested. Um, so what we, what the change or what we're requesting or recommending, uh, with this new IGA is that, uh, well, let me, let me step back. Um, part of the IGA too is, uh, if we were gonna change it, uh, there was gonna be, um, a cost. Well, uh, they would, the high school would buy out, um, at, um, the word is leaving me.
Uh, it was, you mean the price? It was a hundred and fifty thousand.
No, no, the, what, the estimate, um,
Oh, the depreciation?
Depreciation value, thank you. Uh, at a depreciation value, uh, so, um, we spoke with the school, uh, we had a, a value given to us by Musco Lighting, which is the, the company that we, uh, purchased the lights from. Uh, they, they, uh, valued the lights currently at a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so the, the high school is willing to buy the lights from the, from the city at that level, uh, at a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the contract for the lights still has a five-year warranty that they could, uh, that would still cover the lights for the high school. Uh, so this new contract, uh, that was the old one. This new IGA, what we're proposing is that, um, they purchased the lights at the current, uh, depreciation value, uh, from the city. Um, the other change is that we're recommending that we've been, uh, negotiating with the, with the high school is that, um, they take over the responsibility of paying the lights. Uh, they take over the responsibility of maintaining the field. But we still have the same agreement using facilities, uh, at the high school, uh, and them using facilities at, uh, uh, from the city. Uh, and it seems like that is something the, uh, that's open, they want to agree, but we wanted just to kind of update the council, let them know that that's what, uh, staff is recommending. Um, and, uh, I think this would be, um, support our maintenance for our new, uh, park that we're developing, so uh, we would be able to utilize that time, some of that time that we've been maintaining the high school lights to, to move over to the new park. And of course, uh, we wouldn't be responsible for paying for the, for the electricity of those lights anymore, uh, which was about anywhere from four to five thousand a year. Doesn't sound too much, but every year, uh, it, it adds up. And so that would, uh, that's what I kind of wanted to bring up, uh, uh, to Mayor and Council for discussion, if anybody has any questions or, or, um, any comments they'd like to provide direction on.
Uh, Louis, uh, sell it, sell the lights, uh, keep the maintenance. Uh, they could do the maintenance on the yard, uh, on, on, on the, on the grounds. And so this is a good deal, this is a win-win situation, it was about time it happened, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galvez, uh, Mario?
Yeah, like the mayor mentioned, it's a win-win, so, yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, Mr. Carrasco?
Agree with, uh, Mayor.
Okay, so, no, no comments, any additional comments, uh, Mr. Torres?
No, good, uh, good choice, uh, Louis.
Thank you.
Mr. Ponce, any comments for staff?
No, I agree with the mayor too, uh, thank you.
Mr. Cabrera, any comments for staff?
None, thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, okay, uh, thank you, Louis.
And of course, just to want to mention, uh, so that will be coming up and, uh, if approved, and then it would go to the, the school board to sign off, um, and again, uh, just to be clear, so this new agreement, um, we would basically have the same agreement of use facilities, just that they, they incur the cost of the lights, and, uh, and then they, they do the maintenance and pay the bill.
All right.
All right, thank you.
That's good, thank you. Next item, do we have another item, or we have?
Uh, discussion of possible directions to staff regarding the border area taxi vehicle permit and parking fine for use of the border parking and taxi stand and the border area taxi stand. That's a fantastic story, okay?
Uh, so, last, uh, time we met, uh, you ordered twenty-five-dollar fee for the border area taxi permit for the taxi stand, uh, in the border area. And then we also had a staff meeting, uh, and some council members attended, uh, three, so there wasn't a quorum. And the group came up with, uh, to extend the fee, uh, for, through the end of two thousand twenty-one, for the ones that already have the permit. Tadeo saying, holding up the number two?
We agreed to extend the ones that currently have a permit to their deadline in two thousand and twenty-two.
So that's, uh, January, I think, uh, it's due in, uh, December, right? December thirty-first, and then they have until January to pay, the end of January to pay.
Good, and that, that's correct, uh, so, so the deadline for, well, the, the license will expire, uh, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And, and permit holders have, have until January thirty-first to, to pay the renewal for, for the following year.
And then Jorge, uh, checked, we, if you, I know Mr. Cabrera wasn't here when this, uh, came about, but there is a provision, uh, for, uh, certain businesses, and they have to have a, a certain number of taxi cabs to get a permit, and they have some other requirements. So Jorge did an analysis to see how many, uh, cab companies actually qualify. And the ones that have the permits are the ones that qualify. And none of them have added, uh, taxis except for one. Um, so, the number of permits we give out, uh, to limit the traffic on the border is thirty-five, and so we're recommending to stick with that thirty-five. So those thirty-five vehicles would be the same ones that would be extended.
Sounds good.
Uh, the, so, there's a resolution for the fee, there's an ordinance that cleans up, uh, because we actually had the fifty-dollar fee in the ordinance, so there's a cleanup ordinance to take that fee out of the ordinance and put it into a resolution. And then there was just some other little cleanup things that I, I did while, while I was in there. And then the group also, uh, had the idea of what's happening is that cabs are setting up like their own taxi stands, but on public property. So for the border area, there's a proposal for a minimum fine of two hundred and fifty dollars uh, for setting up a taxi stand where there isn't a taxi stand on public property. So those are the three proposals. Uh, they all gave me an email, reminded me of what else came out of that. Did I miss something?
No, we're good.
Okay, all right.
However, Councilor Cabrera, Councilor Ponce and Torres were present, uh, I don't know if they have anything to say or add to what Kay and Jorge just presented.
I'll go ahead and go down the line then, just to see. Any, uh, questions or anything, Mario?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Cabrera?
Only thing is, um, the chief mentioned that he was gonna implement the, not allowing the parks to, not allowing cars to park in the no-parking zone, um, and it's still happening, um. So he said there was gonna be an, um, unmarked vehicle controlling the area, I'm not sure if that already started or not.
Correct, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, um, that's correct, we've already started the enforcement on unmarked vehicles as well as marked vehicles, and utilizing our traffic enforcement officers, which we discussed at that meeting, to do the enforcement as far as that's concerned. I don't know how many were written today, I haven't got an update on that, but that is beginning to be enforced. And, uh, we revisited some of the other things as well, and we think that this is exactly what needs to be done. This also, the, uh, suggestion here of the two hundred and fifty-dollar fine, one of the issues that came up was the parking of the taxis paying into the meters. And so one of the things that this will help clean up is give law enforcement the ability to have some teeth to a sighting if they go into a parking meter, uh, that's reserved for public, and we all agree that it should be reserved for public. And it puts it to where we can enforce that, or any other place that's considered public to where they cannot set up private property, that's a whole separate issue, but at least in public property, this cleans it up as well. Hopefully that'll address, um, what you needed to know.
Thank you, chief, yes. Uh, another thing, Tadeo, do you know if Glenn made contact with the owner of the land about the leasing to the taxis?
Uh, Glenn was not tasked to do that, but I believe, uh, Lieutenant Santana did, and we have a letter, the same letter we spoke about during the meeting.
Well, Lisa, we talked about Tadeo?
No, 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 I think, um, Glenn mentioned in her meeting that he was gonna get ahold of the owner of the property, not the one that is leasing, because he said that the, the ones leasing might be leasing to the taxis instead of it being an actual lea, like a legal lease, so.
Oh.
Glenn to their, uh, that in our meeting was gonna look into it.
Sorry about that, you're talking about the sublease of the property?
Yeah, because I guess there's a lease, and then there was like an additional sublease to the taxis. Um, as of now, with the letter that Lieutenant Santana has, they're covered. But Glenn was gonna ask the owner, like, the owner of the land, if it was okay for the leasing to lease to somebody else.
I know that, um, yeah, I know that, uh, Lieutenant Santana had contacted them in reference to how many taxis they could actually have on that private property as far as what the lease agreement was. What we understand was they were allowed two. Uh, it came also to our knowledge that there might have been a third one that may have been parked there as well. One of the things that I would caution us to do, because it is private property, and you have a landlord, uh, tenant lease agreement, um, is to make sure that we as law enforcement, and, and I think maybe where you're getting to where, uh, Glenn may have been the one that was gonna contact him. If law enforcement interjects themselves into a landlord-tenant dispute, I don't think that that is one of the things that we should do, simply because it places liability on us, uh, in getting involved in a civil matter as well. And so I think the best option would be for someone else other than law enforcement to contact, uh, the owner of the property, find out what the landlord-tenant, uh, agreement is, if there is one, um, because of that private property and what they're limiting, and then allow that to go, if it needed to go, go to more of a civil direction, uh, because we really cannot enforce landlord-tenant disputes on private property.
And, uh,
Correct, yeah, you understand that, so, that's what Glenn had said, that he was just on, on the side, he was gonna talk to the landlord to see if, if that was a lease for taxis or, or what the deal was, but.
I'll follow up with you.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry, uh, uh, chief? Uh, this is Mayor Sanchez.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, uh, first, first and foremost, uh, I, I believe when a taxi companies were supposed to lease offices, there's certain requirements they have to meet. For example, they have to have a dispatcher, they have to have, uh, phones.
Correct.
They have, they have to have all these things. So in order for, uh, I believe more than one or two or three can get together, uh, there's certain restrictions that require us to, to verify. Now, when an owner says, "Well, well, you don't need those radios," that becomes an issue, then I think we can enforce.
Uh, so, we used to, I think, uh, I was trying to follow the thread, but just from my memory, because I couldn't find the documentation to follow the thread, but I think we used to require that of all taxi drivers, and then we were preempted by state law, but we did insert it for the permit. So
Yes.
So the problem is, so the problem is, that's only for the city's taxi stand, it's not for people who are setting up a taxi stand on private property.
Right, and I think that's where the confusion is at, Mayor, that, that requirement that they have to meet is for them to get their business license for the taxi stand and to be part of that, and they have to show that they have an office, they have radios, they have a dispatcher. The situation that they're having here, I think, is that a property leased a tenant right now, and what, I'm assuming this is the property that's behind the Casa, the Casa Cambio, right?
Correct.
Yeah. The bus, they're, they're allowing two taxis to park on their private property, which they lease from a landlord in the back parking lot, and just stand there and park there, but they're not. So that's the issue, that we're getting into a private civil matter, and we, not in regards to the enforcing of us, enforcing the people that want to get the thirty-five permits that we issued for the people that qualify, because they do have those requirements that we're asking, so they found a loophole, they said, "Okay, we're gonna go pay that guy two hundred bucks to park in his back parking lot and pick up people there." Because that's on private property. So that's, that's what they're trying to, that, that's what they're trying to figure out how to get.
We need to be, we need to be smarter than that, and Glenn needs to be smarter than that, I'm sorry. And the thing is, i- if they can actually do that, so we're kind of defeating the purpose here.
So, uh, it, it would be, it would be like right now, if a hundred
property, that person that's leasing should have a business license that I mean for. I don't know, that's something legal where, where, again, I agree the chief shouldn't be involved in that, that's something for Glenn, and do it the right way, so we don't get any liability on our part, and that way they answer Mr. Cabrera's question as well. So I think that's something that we need to make sure that they figure that out.
Glenn was going to go and try to do that, it had nothing to do with the chief. My second question was just if Glenn already started looking into that, because that's what he was going to do, he was going to talk to the landlord and see, because I guess he mentioned the legality issue, because the lease, the person leasing to the taxis, he's creating like a subcontractor kind of thing. So he was going to look into the legal possibilities of blocking the taxis from being on private property there.
Right.
If he had already started looking into that or not, though.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what Glenn has done as far as from the time that we had that meeting and today, I don't know, but make, Kay may be able to follow up with him on that particular issue.
I'll follow up and bring that back next week.
The only downside to that is that, and I get what Glenn is trying to do, and he's trying to approach it on the, on the personal level with the property owner, because he probably knows him, but then that's, the only thing that property owner has to do is go back to his leasing, be negotiated, say, "I'll let you do a sublease, but I'm going to raise more rent," and then he's going to have a document. We can enforce it if he does that. So again, hopefully they, they find a way to fix this and not get involved in that part, so.
Yeah, because that was part of, part of the reason why was, because the first loophole that they found was because those five parking meters that were there, you know, it was a free-for-all on who got there first and put their change in the machine. It made it very difficult for us to enforce at that particular point. But with this $250 fine, setting up anywhere on a public property and eliminating any parking meter, because they could have gone right down to Main Street, put their money in the machine, done the same thing, but this will add extra teeth to the enforcement part of it, which is the reason why we got to the point where we took those five machines out, put the emergency parking in, which we needed, and then limited the loading and unloading. And I think Elodrio made a good point, in the fact that we are going to add immediately loading and unloading to the signage as well, that I think defines it a little bit more as well. That way, we have good enforcement, private property obviously being the one that we'll have to find some type of solution to, but I think that we're close to where we need to be.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the other thing that staff did, you know, with our parking laws, the two chiefs have to talk with Lojil, and the chief of police decides where, like taxi stands, parking can be, and they looked hard at where they could put more taxi stands, and decided there, it just wasn't safe to do it at the border, and the group last week also agreed with that conclusion.
Sounds good.
So are we okay with those, the fee being extended and the parking fine?
I think so. I think I still need, there's three more council members that still didn't give you opinion, I believe. Then Mr. Carrasco, Mr. Ponce, or Mr. Torres have any opinion?
No comment.
Thank you.
No.
Mr. Ponce?
No comment.
All right. And thank you to the council members that went there with staff to work this out and figure out what's the best thing to do there. So, all right, you guys got direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys for working on that so quick. I know that was right before Christmas, and New Year's and Christmas came through, so thank you for getting that back pretty quick. Next item, please.
Daniel?
Item number three, adjournment. Adjourn. Motion for that?
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second from the Mayor. All right, so yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Against? All right, motion passes, everybody have a good night. Thank you, Mayor, say save.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys, have a good night.